Hi, good evening, everybody. I just like banging the gab while I do it like twice a month. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council order. There is an addition to the agenda. You'll find 11.3, we're adding accessibility grant to the bottom of the agenda. So just make note of that, although if you've already opened Escrib, you need to refresh it, it'll populate when you refresh that. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Councillor Giger, seconded by Councillor Caldwell, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to, well, I should start by saying that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Announcements, that's a good segue into September 30th, Town Hall will be closed, our operations will be closed for a day of truth and reconciliation. I know that the province of Nova Scotia is one of a number of provinces recognizing this important day, so I would encourage our citizens to educate themselves. There's a lot of resources out there, the Multicultural Association will have some resources. At 11:00 a.m., we were having an event down at the Bichinuaska Park, and so I would encourage the public to attend that. But don't just take it as a day off, if you have the day off, please, please do some reading and some educating so that we can learn and move forward. It's not a holiday to just do nothing. Are there any other announcements from members of council?
Very, very important when you worship, this Sunday kicks off Fire Prevention Week for 2021, and it runs from October the 3rd to October the 9th this year. And Fire Prevention Week is always held that week because it's in commemoration of the great Chicago fire in 1871. The fire killed more than 250 people and left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 acres, and burned more than 200 acres of land. And this year's theme is learn the sounds of fire safety, learn the sound of your smoke detector, your carbon monoxide detector, those are your first lines of defense to evacuate safety. And this week, this year, Bridgewater is having a church parade on October the 3rd at 2:00 p.m. And the other big day is the mutual aid parade in Lunenburg on October the 6th at 6:00 p.m. And Friday, you'll see fire trucks around town doing fire trails. It's Fire Prevention Week, it's a busy time of year for every fire department, so if you can get out to the church parade and just say thank you to a fireman that week, it would be awesome, because they're all volunteers working to protect you.
Yeah, and responded to almost 300 calls a year just for the town of Bridgewater Volunteer Fire Service, so I don't think a lot of people realize that that's how many they go to. So I know every year that number just boggles my mind, because it's not just a fire, they respond to almost everything. That means they have to leave their job, go get their gear on, get in the truck and go, so thank you to the, not just the volunteer firefighters, but their employers who let them go in the middle of a shift. For employers to do that, that's sometimes a sacrifice to their business, that if they didn't do that, we'd be in a bit of trouble, so appreciate that. Any other announcements from members of council? Hearing none, we'll go down to delegations, I know our delegation is here, Shannon Fredericks from Coastal Action to give us a presentation on the Le Havre River water quality. So, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that you have about 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. All right.
No pressure.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. I'll start by apologizing for the mix-up last week, thank you for your patience. So my name's Shannon Fredericks, I'm the Assistant Director at Coastal Action, and I'm here tonight to talk about the work we've done in the Le Havre watershed over the last 15 years, with a focus on our water quality monitoring program. I'll just quickly acknowledge that we live and work in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And just quickly, for those of you who aren't familiar with Coastal Action, we're an environmental nonprofit organization, and we're based in Mahone Bay, but we work throughout southwestern Nova Scotia and across the province as well, and then in partnership with other groups to deliver Atlantic Canadian-wide projects. We work mainly within five core research areas or program themes, and these are watersheds and water quality, species at risk and biodiversity, coastal and marine, climate change, and environmental education. And so a bit about the background of our Le Havre River watershed project, this is one of our longest-running programs, started in 2007, mainly in response to, there was a lot of public concern over the health of the river and the entire watershed. Our work is guided by a stakeholder advisory group with various government department reps, academia, other nonprofit groups, industry, and concerned citizens. The main activities of the program are the water quality monitoring program, but also quite a bit of fish habitat restoration, riparian restoration, wide variety of environmental assessments, and outreach and education initiatives. And I'll just quickly mention a few other projects that we've done in the Le Havre over the past few years. So in 2015, we did a health study on the Le Havre estuary. In recent years, we did some Atlantic salmon research and looked at the impacts of invasive fish species on the salmon in the Le Havre. In 2016, we did a health study on the cemetery pond in the Brookside Cemetery, found a lot of goldfish. Since 2018, we've been delivering the Sherbrooke Lake Water Quality Monitoring Program on behalf of the municipality of the District of Lunenburg and the municipality of Chester. And we've also done several bioswale and DPave projects, a lot of these within the town of Bridgewater in the last few years, and we actually have one bioswale installation on the go this week in the town. So I'll just quickly cover the fish habitat side of the program. This map is the entire Le Havre watershed, but you can see it's been broken down into six different regions, these are the subwatersheds, and a lot of our assessment work and restoration work is done at this sub watershed scale. So for example, this map is showing you, all these red dots are stream crossings, so anywhere where a stream crosses under a bridge or a culvert. And we assess these structures to make sure fish are able to pass upstream and migrate to various habitats that they need. We have found a lot of these to be full blockages to fish, so we've done various restoration techniques to make sure fish can get through them. And so over the last 15 years or so, we've restored almost 14,000 square meters of fish habitat and almost 12,000 square meters of riparian habitat. So now to the water quality monitoring program, this is now in its 15th year, and it's become one of the strongest, longest-running water quality programs in Atlantic Canada, so we're quite proud of that. The program itself, we do this year-round once a month, and we monitor 15 sites across the watershed. 10 of those 15 sites are full analysis sites where we're taking water samples to ship to the lab for various parameters, and we're also using the YSI handheld meter, which is what you see in the bottom corner there. And then the remaining five sites, we just use the YSI handheld meter, and we don't collect water quality samples from those. So this work costs a fair bit of money, as you can imagine, a lot of it is lab fees, so we fund it in various ways, but since 2008, the town of Bridgewater has contributed over $60,000 to this work, which we're of course very appreciative of. And the results of the program, we share in various ways, we report to our funders and our partners, we produce easy, easily digested reports for the public, but we also put all of the data from this program and all of our Coastal Action watershed, water quality programs, is housed on an open source platform called Atlantic Data Stream. So anybody who's interested in water quality, whether that's a citizen or somebody doing research in a university, they can go to this website and they have open access to the Le Havre dataset, but also many other water quality datasets across Atlantic Canada. So in the watershed, we've seen a general improvement over the last five years or so at a watershed scale. Some of the biggest issues that persist year over year, of course freshwater acidification, this is very common in a lot of the southwestern Nova Scotia rivers, and with acidification, you get, a lot of heavy metals can reach toxic concentrations as well. So these are not great for fish and other aquatic organisms, and we're also seeing a general increase in water temperatures. Some of the issues that we see with fecal bacteria and nutrients, these are very often tied to heavy rainfall events, so we do see the occasional spike in the upper reaches of the watershed, but for the most part, the bacteria issue is restricted to the estuary portion of the watershed. Some good news is that we've seen improvement at our Centennial Trail water quality site. So this is essentially the lowest freshwater site on the river before the river comes through town and turns into estuary with a mix of fresh and saltwater. And so seeing an improvement at Centennial Trail is a good overall sign that the health of the watershed above that point is improving. We do see a bit of a decline in water quality as you move downstream from that site and come sort of through town and then down through the estuary, and our lowest site on the river is called Upper Le Havre, and this one typically, we see the worst water quality at this site. It's not, you know, it's not surprising to see that the most developed part of the watershed is where the most impacts on water quality tend to be seen. So last year, at the request of the town, we put in these three additional water quality monitoring sites. These were monitored for about eight months, from August to March, so we have about eight data points for each one. The three blue sites that you see on the map are these new sites, and so, and then above and below, you see the sites from our regular water quality program. Some limitations with this small dataset would be that we didn't capture the water quality impacts that come from spring runoff, or a lot of the summer drought, because we didn't start until, until August. And then again, with, when you're monitoring monthly, you're missing a lot of those shorter-term impacts where a heavy rain event is going to wash stormwater into the river and have a very, a very fast impact on water quality and then eventually dissipate. So what we saw at these three additional sites over this eight-month period, during the warmest months of that eight months, we saw low dissolved oxygen, at some points even dipping below the recommended guidelines for protection of aquatic health. It's not overly surprising, given that warmer water does not hold as much dissolved oxygen, so we do see that sort of dip across the board when the warm water is warm. But these low dips in oxygen are also somewhat tied to the impacts of the stormwater runoff that showed up in the, in the other parameters. So we saw quite a bit of variability in total dissolved and suspended solids, as well as bacteria, and again, these were mostly tied to extreme rainfall events. And then we typically see a more chronic problem with elevated bacteria further down in the estuary. Many of those sources are now being addressed, and so we're hoping over the next few years to see an improvement there. So what this eight months of monitoring suggests is that we have point source and non-point source stormwater pollution impacts. And again, this is not overly surprising or outside of what we expected, given that the town of Bridgewater is the most heavily developed part of the watershed, this is where you have the largest amount of people, the largest amount of development, and also the highest proportion of impermeable surfaces, which is really the key factor when you have pollution impacts tied to stormwater. So you have roads, parking lots, pavement everywhere, rooftops, all those things just speed up that flow of water and provide a lot more opportunity for that water to pick up pollutants. So the question is, where do we go from here? We, we are certainly willing to add another water quality site to the program if the town is interested in, you know, learning more about how that water quality changes over this short stretch of the river. I wouldn't recommend maintaining all three of them, because they're so close together, they're essentially showing us the same stormwater impacts at each site, there may be some small variations in terms of what sort of development or industry is inputting at that point, but one site between our existing Centennial Trail upstream of town and our Bridgewater site downstream of town is certainly doable, if that's something the town is interested in. But if we're talking about protected water quality, a lot of, a lot of these might be better put into stormwater management and green infrastructure solutions. So I won't go through this list, because I know I'm out of time, but a lot of these things, some of these things are already happening, I know the town is working towards CSL separation, which is wonderful, we've been working on installing bioswales around town, a lot of these are very heavily tied to education initiatives throughout town, the people in the town, and then any opportunity to divert stormwater away from the sewer systems and collect it in barrels, or gardens, or cisterns, anything like that, on a large scale is going to help reduce that volume, and then vegetated buffers, stormwater ponds, those types of things are going to help filter the water, filter some of those pollutants out of the water before they hit the river. And I'll just quickly show you this, this is one of the bioswales that we put in at the NSDC campus, we put two of these in their parking lot. This one alone is collecting about 1,900 square meters of pavement runoff, and it's removing 160 kilograms of contaminants per year. So that just shows you what one bioswale is capable of doing in one parking lot. And these are a few other photos of those bioswales. We are currently putting one in at the St. Joseph's Church on Pleasant Street, where we had about 70 Bridgewater junior high students come out and help us plant these, and we're looking for locations for more, so if there are parts of town that are suffering from chronic stormwater and flooding issues, we'd be interested in chatting about the possible sighting of some we'd be interested in chatting about the possible sighting of some more of these bio swales. And is it for me?
Great, thank you. So again, my question's probably more for Larry. In terms of that last question that was raised, and I think of like the Old Town Center parking lot, for example, or locations like that, would that be somewhere that a bio swale would make sense? You've got a large parking lot that we own, and I know there's some flooding issues at the back there.
It's an area that we can look at. If council is interested, certainly explore options, I guess.
Yeah, it might be nice to have staff maybe just come back with, you know, we've got four pieces of property that we own that are on our radar for flooding, or there's a lot of runoff that's going into the storm sewer, which is then being treated or overflowing in the river that we could maybe address.
Explore. Is it, I guess the question to Larry would be, is there a lot of resource, is it a resource-intensive thing to explore that, or is it just a matter of identifying large areas that are covered in asphalt that would obviously have an impact?
And I guess where I was going was just, I'm half wondering if Larry has off the top of his head, like, oh, if I could just get this parking lot to get its rainfall under control, just that, not a lot of staff resources.
I guess not off the top of my head, but I guess I wasn't thinking of options either. There might be something with a lot of, I guess, effort. And I guess the only other thing is if it was a budget impact, potentially something we could, you know, explore for council to consider for next year's budget or something as well, if that's a wish.
Would it be possible, just, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Can staff just have a conversation?
We can have a cursory look, and then knowing that we probably would aim for next year's budget, to propose something for council to consider. Yeah?
We do have budget for these, so we're really just looking for locations. It would be a partnership with the town, but yeah, we would come with the budget.
But does council think, I mean, to me, it makes sense to at least target, to figure out if we have anything where we can make.
See if there's an opportunity there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I guess you need a motion, so.
We can explore. We can, yeah. A motion to rec staff to explore the options of bio swales in our parking or town facilities. Yeah.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. You've captured that. Perfect. Seconded by Councilor Caldwell. Any discussion? Do you have a question?
Road salting best practices. Do you have suggestions, or is that something that we are or could look at?
I think that, and I defer to Larry on that, but I suspect we have looked at our mix, and given climate and asphalt and grades of roads and stuff, that we do use salt, but if you're.
Oh, guidelines.
Yeah. Are you asking if we've considered alternatives to that?
Yes.
That's a question.
Larry's going to tell us all about beet juice and.
Molasses.
And molasses, and I'm going to, Councilor McDonald, because she remembers all the other different, there are a whole bunch of juices that we were using.
Brines.
Yeah, it was like a gym.
We, I guess we had in the budget some money suggested for changing over our equipment to a brine solution. There is science behind it. It has to be applied, I guess, with the right weather conditions and the right timing. Otherwise, it may not be very successful. It might actually be the opposite effect of what you're looking for. We've tried some pre-wetting agents on our salt, molasses-based, to try and reduce the amount of salt that we use. And we've been putting in more computerized equipment in efforts to, again, reduce the amount of salt that we're applying. So we've been trying a few things, I guess. Beet juice has been suggested. We haven't tried it. I think supplies in this area might be a concern. I'm not aware of anyone else in the area that's trying it, so I'm not sure as a single municipality how effective or how available those types of products would be.
Other questions? Got a mover in a second. Are all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Well, that was good. That's an effective presentation.
Great.
Any other questions? Councilor Thorburn.
I think there was a suggestion on adding one more test site. We've done three, and we should pick one of the three, whether it be Old Bridge or Shipyard Landing. Where do you think the best location for another additional test site would be to give us the most value?
I'd have to have a closer look at where the, like, the CSO pipes come into the river and some of the other effluents from various industries to give you a really good answer. But if that's something that council's interested in, we can have a look at that and sort of recommend the best spot if we're going to put one between Centennial and Bridgewater.
I think there'd be some value in if your organization came back with some recommendations, especially as we're doing upgrades. I know council would be interested to really measure the impact that, you know, millions of dollars of infrastructure upgrades are going to be doing, to make sure that we're getting the results that we hope to get. So I, yeah, I'd love to have you come back before budget time, because there'd be a budget impact, to bring us that information. Councilor McDonald.
It's kind of an interesting point that you're making, that, you know, over the next 10 years, there will be significant investment made to our wastewater systems. Is there opportunity to partner and kind of monitor some of that so that we can provide information to the public? You know, you spent this many million, and this is what we got for it. This is the impact on, you know, our cherished La Havre River.
Yeah, absolutely.
Might be kind of an ongoing partnership over the.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We sort of somewhat have the same arrangement with municipality District of Lunenburg, where they implemented the straight pipe replacement program. So the first few years of that, we did some higher frequency monitoring in the estuary. And then towards the end of that program, we're hoping that they'll bring us back to do some more, to kind of look at the before and after impact on that end of the estuary. But yeah, it's certainly something we can discuss as well.
Also, considering future upgrades or maintaining that infrastructure, having that information is so helpful in making sure we can secure the funding to keep on top of it and not kind of slip backwards. So that's such really valuable information to have.
It would certainly build a case for, yeah, future investment from our funding partners, right? We show that success, and just say if we can just get the same amount of funding, we can have more success. Okay, any other questions? That's great. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Next item is, do you create your minutes from the September 13 council meeting? Any errors or omissions in that? Hearing none. Kevin motion approved. The minutes have circulated. Councilor Caldwell, seconded by Councilor McDonald. All those in favor? Most opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. No planning items. No planning items.
I know. They got your last meeting.
Yeah, they need a break anyway, to recharge. There's a lot coming. For correspondence for information, we have a letter from Peter Oickel, talking about urban beautification and sidewalk curb upkeep, and some suggestions there, and just perhaps reinvigorating or re-engaging people into, you know, the property as their property meets the road. And I think we all, I know I go out there and I pull the weeds in my curb, and then the next week I feel like someone planted weeds because they keep creeping up. So that's there for council's information, and if there's ideas that we want to draw out of that, to either, I think he suggested putting something in the bridge, or on social media, we can do that. Down to reports and recommendations. RFP 2021-10 Engineering Services: Design of Pump Station 3. This is a great segue from the presentation we just had into this.
Good evening to everyone. So I'm here to talk about RFP 2021-10 Engineering Services for the Design of Pump Station 3 Replacement. As you may remember, in December 2020, Pump Station 3 had a number of failures, which created environmental and other risks to the pump station concerns. In January 2021, the council approved a staff request to provide emergency budget funding for the repair of Pump Station 3, and that was an emergency repair. Staff tendered in May 2021 for that work. It only got one bid, which was 40% greater than the capital budget we had. So we came back to council, and council elected to cancel the construction tender and repurpose that $180,000 capital budget item for design of a full Pump Station 3 upgrade or replacement, which is what we were going out for with this RFP. So in August 2021, staff issued the RFP for engineering services for the design of a new Pump Station 3. And in September 2021, that RFP closed, we received two proposals. Of those two proposals, we had one that was a successful proposal, and we had a total of 180,000 budgeted for the work. And we're recommending to council that we award to the overall highest evaluation and successful bidder, WSP, at an estimated cost of $229,123.13, that's HST included, or $207,776.81 net HST. Because they provided the most complete proposal, they have extensive pumping station qualifications and recent work in the area. The estimated cost includes the full mandatory design pricing, items one to seven in the RFP, and that will include the full design package. They did come in slightly higher than the $180,000 budget that we had. We are also recommending that, to provide continuity between the design and construction phases, we would like to conditionally award the provisional construction inspection services to the same design consultant. That way, they handle not only the design, but they'll also witness the installation of the product, which will not occur until the 2023-24 budget year. So the award recommendation will be based on the future budget approval of that part of the recommendation. And the construction services provision, item 11, has an estimated cost of $231,943.50, HST included, which is $210,334,043.04 net HST. Are there any questions?
Questions from council. Councilor Thorburn.
So if we are awarding the second part of your request, then we are preapproving something because it's for the year 2023-2024. Just to make clear that we are preapproving. Does that correct?
Yeah. Okay. I don't think we've ever pre-approved something so far. Maybe a fire truck. Other questions? Council, someone prepared to make the first motion? I'll refresh the, sorry, I'm going to refresh your eScribe, please. Now, is someone prepared to make the motion? First motion? Councilor Caldwell.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater award RFP 2021-10 Engineering Services: Design of Pump Station Number 3 Replacement to WSP for an estimated cost of $229,123.13, HST included, $207,776.81 net HST, which includes the full mandatory design pricing, items one to seven, as recommended in document 21-125.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Is someone prepared to make the second motion? Councilor Pujer.
Yes, Your Worship. That council for the town of Bridgewater award Tender 2021-10 Engineering Services: Design of Pump Station Number 3 Replacement Construction Services, provision item 11 to WSP at an estimated cost of $231,943.50. Is that right? HST included, $210,334.43 net HST, be awarded in fiscal year 2023-24, contingent on council approving the 2023-24 capital budget for the construction and engineering construction services.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Again, further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I know we're a long way off, but I feel like we're starting to gain some momentum and starting to see the potential dent in our wastewater issues. That's great. Our next item is Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund.
You can waste water and keep that going.
So no more planning items today, but just all wastewater.
Wastewater today.
Well, the first seed letters of funds are funds, so.
So I'll start to try and tell you a bit about the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund, or I may refer to it as well as DMAF. It's a 10-year budget commitment. And as you're all aware, in 2009, the Canadian Council of Ministers of the Environment introduced new requirements to municipalities, requiring them to no longer increase wastewater overflows as a result of development or redevelopment, and eliminate overflows by 2039. To achieve this 2039 deadline, the town is aware they must continuously invest in infrastructure upgrades with an estimated $52.6 million in wastewater upgrades. The town recently approved the $7.1 million Pump Station 11 and Riverline Crossing project, which is a major component in these upgrades. And currently, there's a 10-year capital wastewater budget that includes approximately $36,000, or $36 million, or 85% of wastewater upgrades directly addressing the issues contained within that $52.6 million upgrade project. This magnitude of spending compromises the town's debt service ratio, raising several years of the 10-year capital program above the 15% target set by the Department and its municipal affairs. To ensure this level of wastewater investment and maintain a debt service ratio below 15%, it will be important to secure funding opportunities to help offset the overall wastewater costs. So in August of this year, the federal government issued a new funding opportunity, the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund. This is a national competitive and merit-based contribution program. It provides support for infrastructure projects impacted by current and future climate-related risks triggered by floods, storms, et cetera, that create risks to health and safety, threats to critical infrastructure, and disruption of critical infrastructure service. Infrastructure projects can be new or rehabilitation of public infrastructure. And they have two streams of funding: small-scale projects between $1 and $20 million, and large-scale projects of $20 million or greater in total eligible costs. The maximum federal contribution for these projects is up to 40% for municipalities. Staff have reviewed this program and believe the town has an opportunity to propose the following project through the large-scale project funding stream. The project we're proposing is the town of Bridgewater Sanitary Stormwater Master Plan Upgrade Project. The project will upgrade critical wastewater infrastructure, including five pump stations, four major operating systems at the wastewater treatment plant, and 16 storm sewer separation projects that have reached their life expectancy. These upgrades will reduce combined sewer overflows during wet weather events while addressing climate change requirements. It's a 10-year program for the replacement of critical wastewater assets and storm sewer separation projects that follow the 2018 Sanitary Stormwater Master Plan recommendations. They are the basis of your original 10-year wastewater capital budget, with an additional year of projects to reach the 2032 10-year window that they're open for. In your package, we provided two options. Option A is approximately $39 million, which is a bit over your original 10-year wastewater capital budget, but it is based on the exact projects that were in that capital wastewater capital budget, but it is based on the exact projects that were in that capital wastewater budget, and also it reflects some of the current pricing that we've seen over the last couple of years that's a bit increased due to COVID and other factors. The funding itself requires us to put in an additional 30% contingency on our actual budget that we're presenting to the funding partners. So in order to go with option A, it would actually be a $51 million investment, and 40% of that would be funded. So the town's portion of it would be just a little over $31 million, and the partner's funding would be a little over $20 million. So you would actually still be under our original budget targets. We also looked at a couple of other options, but the second best option that we found was option B2, and that came in at a total price of $29,162,000. In this option, we totally removed one large-scale inflow infiltration project for about $2 million from the option A list, and we removed approximately $7.8 million of the INI or inflow infiltration projects from the original option A DMAF application. And those ones would be still funded by the town's budget, but we would fund them fully. So it would just not have the full 40% funding from the DMAF providers. The risk of going with option two is not all of the 2018 Sanitary Stormwater Master Plan projects are completed with this, that we were originally anticipating in our 10-year budget, and you would require full town budget funding for approximately $10 million worth of those projects. And I'll turn it over to Kim to talk a little bit about the differences between those two options in terms of your debt service ratio.
Okay. So the very last page of your package has a very busy spreadsheet, so I'm going to try to explain it as concisely as possible. That very last page, you might have to rotate, and I had to rotate mine and make it a little bit bigger. The very first row in that is your 21-22 capital budget and the debt service ratio as a result of our current capital budget. And it identifies that we would exceed the 15% debt service target in '27-28. So we wanted to use that as a baseline when we were evaluating the options. And to give you a little perspective, Audrey's option A, which, you know, added a year and so on, so it's a little bit higher than our budget currently, we wanted to give you an idea of what would happen if that were implemented just in our capital budget, and we would actually exceed 15% one year earlier in '26-27. So then we looked at what would happen with the 40% DMAF grant, because that would have a substantial impact at that 15%. And when we do that, we actually never get over 15%. The highest we get, I believe, is 13.34 in the '27-28 year. So we're a little more than 3% less than in debt service ratio than we are under our current capital budget. The complicating factor, and Audrey addressed that, is that we, as part of the application, we would be required to add a 30% contingency to all of the budget amounts. So then, the fourth set of percentages is what would happen if we have option A, add the 30% contingency to the $39 million that we have in list for option A, and then receive 40% funding at that level. So we don't exceed 15%, but we get really, really close in '27-28. So while it doesn't appear as good as kind of just option A with a grant, because we have to include that contingency amount, we would be including that in our budget going forward. So we're adding 30% and taking off 40%. It doesn't mean we'll incur the contingency amounts, but we're required to budget for it, because if we went over, we wouldn't have the funding for it. So this basically includes the fact that we would get any overages up to that amount funded at 40%. So we just wanted you to kind of have a clear picture, and I know it's a lot of percentages just for one option, but it really gives you an idea of the impact of including the 30% contingency. So we wanted you to see it with and without, but understanding the budget would have to include it going forward. Then we did the same thing for option B, looking at, or B2 that Audrey discussed, that would take out significant amounts of the capital. But really, the effect that that has is that we're not adding the 30% to the $10 million she pulled out. So that's why option B debt service ratios do appear quite a bit better, because we're still including them in the budget, but we haven't added 30%, which is significant.
That's a lot. No. Council Caldwell.
So would getting this funding preclude us from receiving funding from, for example, the province for similar, for these projects?
Not from the province. We're allowed to stack provincial dollars. The challenge is, is a lot of the big dollars come from the province through infrastructure funding, where the federal government gives 50% or 33%, and the province matches that or 25. And then us, we're not allowed to stack federal dollars on top of this. So we can't even take gas tax and move that up to 50% funding. It's 40%, and that's all you get max. We did talk about, could we, you know, just apply for infrastructure funding, you know, through the Invest in Canada Infrastructure Program? The difficulty is, is you don't get $20 million like this. It's, we received, I think, $3 or $4 million a couple of years ago for some of our wastewater initiatives, and that's about the scale. And it's every three or four years that you can apply. So you're not going to, the $20 million opportunity is really what this presents that we wouldn't get.
The $20 million number doesn't come along for towns our size. It goes back to our constant struggle of funding formulas that are based on population, not based on need. So we could have all the infrastructure in southwestern Nova Scotia, and they'll just look at it and go, 8,700 people, that's a couple hundred grand probably. So that's, because I get what you're saying, like, couldn't we just apply elsewhere, stack those maybe? But it wouldn't, I was trying to do the math, too. It doesn't add to the amount that this would be.
I think we could get, like, PCAT funding, and that's what, about $250,000 max? So, and that's provincial, right? So that's probably the biggest pot we could get there.
And in terms of option A or option B, like, for me, we've kicked the can so far down the road, I wouldn't be looking for any options that reduce any amount of capital work that gets done, because then you're just, you're just passing that on to council after council after council, and labor's not going to get cheaper, parts aren't going to get cheaper. It's been pushed down the road to us now, and it would have been cheaper to do it 20 years ago, so time is now. Council McDowell.
On the contingency, so many projects have come in over budget, and there are so many variables. I mean, we just experienced a pandemic being a variable, which we would never have anticipated. And looking at the length of this project, so many things could come up. The opportunity to have a contingency that is, you said it's, that portion is funded as well, isn't it? 40% funded? Is that correct? Have a contingency funded, that's pretty significant as well, considering the number of things that could come up over a 10-year period.
Concerned, if Council McInnes was here, I guess I have to call him, just Bill McInnes now. If he was here, he would raise this point, and that is, if you have a budget that builds in the contingency, those bids tend to magically arrive at that number. So it is frustrating that we're required to put the 30% contingency in, right? As part of the application.
I think the only, the only thing, the only benefit is, is that these are, these are not based on any type of design estimates. They're Class D, I believe it is, which is plus or minus 25% in terms of.
So you're close anyway.
Well, they're not accurate, I guess, is, is you really don't get close to that construction cost until you do your designs and have estimates done. So contingencies are safe. And in this case, the point about it being 10 years and costs escalating every year, it is, I can see why they want it. It's just frustrating that we've got a 25% already built in, and then we're adding another 30 on top.
Oh, we shouldn't be going over budget, then. Everything's going to be coming in under budget. Over budget, coming in under budget.
The good news is, we're able to keep our debt ratio at a number that's manageable, and I think that's the bottom line for me. I was scared when we was getting up to 15 or over 15, but it looks like 13.22 with contingency is not a bad deal. And I'm with the mayor, and I think we kicked the can down the road far enough, and moving it farther down the road just impacts the final price, because that's going up. So I think we have to do.
Council McDowell.
Just wanted to mention, with the contingency, we do hit 14.96%.
Yeah. Yeah, I was not far enough.
Yeah. Keep looking.
If I could ask, Kim, do you foresee any negative aspects of going with, you know, the option three? Like, I guess from a financial, would there be any impacts cash flow-wise for the town?
Like, option B2? Like, the second one?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I mean, the reality is, again, those are Class D estimates, so those could come in higher. As, you know, our reality could be that those come in higher, too, so then we're experiencing the exact same cost level, and we got, you know, then we're hunting down other funding to cover, you know, to cover those programs. So, you know, I know that we talked about the fact that we couldn't stack gas tax with this, and we do normally intend, you know, budget to use gas tax money on these projects, so we couldn't use it, but it frees up gas tax for other projects, whether that's additional paving or other priorities that fall within what's allowed under gas tax. So it frees up gas tax money to do other things when, right now, they're budgeted to cover these projects. So I know we can't use it, but it might give us some monies for other things.
Okay. Good to know.
Gas tax funding, we have to call it by its new name, probably, community building, whatever it's called, gas tax funding. That gets renegotiated with the federal government in two years, so it'd be interesting to see if, I don't know if that'll have any impact on this in terms of stacking, but that, that whole funding agreement between the feds and the province down in municipalities will be renegotiated in a couple of years, so.
Yeah.
It's not going to get worse.
I think this is, this is this particular fund that doesn't allow the stacking. Sometimes when, under other federal funding programs, you can stack, so. It's probably, given the size of the grant, they limit the stacking opportunities.
Other questions? Someone, oh, Council McDowell.
The size of this application, obviously, this is going to be a big application. Was there, is there already time in the work schedule for this, or will this bump something else?
Staff have been working very hard. I'll have to say, Audrey's put in a lot of hours on this, and Allison, and it's with Leon and Jessica, and Kim's done some work on it, too. So it's been a lot of resources put to it, but given, given the opportunity for 20 million, it's something that council asked that we source. So I think we're coming towards the end of it. I know there's probably about another week's worth of work left on it, because we have to do a return on investment piece to it, and so that takes a bit of thought.
Well, thank you to staff for putting miles on this one. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDowell.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the application to the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund program for the large-scale funding stream of projects $20 million and greater, and provide a letter of support to accompany the funding application.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. We've had a good discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Someone like to make the next motion? Council Caldwell.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater commit to the 10-year wastewater capital budget as outlined in option A of document 21-130, contingent on funding approval, to be considered by council during the annual budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Fager. Discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. You are going to be busy for a long, long time. Next item is reserve transfers 2021. It says 21-21.
All right. So the report is basically a result of our year-end procedures, so these are reserve transfers that were either not identified in the original budget or things that came up through the fiscal year 2020-2021. So that list is, begins with our operating surplus. So general operating fund had a surplus this year of just over $1.3 million. So we're requesting to move that to operating reserve, which is actually a requirement that we have to do. Energized Bridgewater currently has received more grant funding than they've spent, so they have a surplus of $670,940, and requesting to transfer that to a smart cities operating reserve for their use throughout the project. We received COVID-19 SAFE restart funding from the provincial government during the year, both general operating as well as for transit. So there's two separate amounts there. We'd like to transfer money to the SAFE restart operating reserve of $350,436, in addition to the transit amount of $21,590. The police operations had budgeted for a $205,000 transfer to operating reserve for future use. However, they had a budget surplus this year, so we're recommending to change the amount to $375,000 to be transferred to the police operating reserve at the end of the year. As of March 31st, there were a number of capital projects that ended up being carried forward into the 21-22 fiscal period. So we're requesting that the capital from operating funding that was allocated for those projects be transferred to the operating reserve until those projects are completed in the current fiscal year. That amount is $828,890. The fresh air films has been accumulating a surplus over time, and that's just been carried forward as deferred revenue. However, we are requesting that we actually set up a fresh air films reserve fund, so that if they need to replace equipment and so on, that that money is held in the town's operating reserve, and that amount is $8,468. Transit funds, we received PTAP grant funding from the province of $25,000. We are required to put that in a reserve fund, so we're requesting to transfer that. And the last operating reserve that we're requesting is that when we received the COVID SAFE restart funding, transit was allowed to use that for lost revenue. So while transit had lost revenue of approximately $21,500, they also cut transit costs, so there wasn't a deficit in transit per se. So this funding, if we don't allocate it to transit, would have just landed in the town's surplus for the year, and we would have been transferring it to the undesignated operating reserve fund. So we've actually said, this relates to transit. They've got the surplus as a result of getting, receiving the COVID SAFE restart funding, so we're requesting it also be set aside in the transit reserve fund. So even though it was considered used, we just didn't want it to end up in our general reserve. And there's one capital reserve transfer, so we had proceeds from the sale of assets of the town, and we're required to transfer those to the capital reserve, and that was $150,000 transferred to the capital reserve that's required. Any questions on that long list?
Questions from council? Pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion to transfer those reserves? Council Caldwell.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve transfers to operating reserves of $3,677,056.25, and capital reserves of $150,000, as detailed in document 21-126.
Great. Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next one is permanent financing.
This request is a result of the deadline with the municipal finance corporation to finance any capital that we've completed that needs to be financed in the fall to venture. The deadline for that is October, to let them know that we plan to participate, is October the first. And we're requesting financing of two projects, partial funding for street paving in the amount of $86,810. Partial funding for street paving in the amount of $86,810. Gas tax was used for the remainder of the street paving, as well as building renovations for transit in the Bridgewater Memorial Arena in the amount of $150,000. So, we're requesting to borrow $236,810 in total for those two projects. I've also attached a schedule of the principal and interest repayments, and you'll note that the interest rate is identified at being 5.5% and the term at 10 years. The reason why the 5.5% is that prior to the municipal finance corporation issuing the debenture, we have to send a letter of commitment. We have to commit to an interest rate of no higher than 5.5%. I anticipate it will be significantly lower than 5.5%, but municipal finance corporation sends us the template of what we have to commit to, and we commit to an interest rate as high as that. So, we're not committing to that interest rate, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So, the repayment schedule will look different than this, hopefully with a lower interest rate, but we are committing to that high of an interest rate.
Questions from the tractor?
One question, for a period not to exceed 15 years, that means that we can't pay that back early. We have to take the full term to pay the amount of money back that we borrow?
I believe you're recommending 10.
10, yes, 10 years.
You're stuck to that term.
For a period not to exceed 15, so we can't pay it back in less than 10 years.
There's a penalty to pay it back.
Penalty, pay it back, no. I just wanted to clarify.
Because the debenture is outstanding, investors are expecting that return over that time period.
Sure, okay.
Other questions? Counsel McDonald?
Did they just never change that template, even though interest rates are really low? Because what if it came in at 5.5%? We could probably go to a bank and potentially secure.
We can't. We're not allowed.
Only short-term at a bank, right?
Yeah. It's our only option.
Okay.
Some provinces have other options. We must finance our long-term borrowing through MFC or through our own funds, basically, if we wanted to borrow from our reserves or something like that.
Okay.
These are two completed projects that were budgeted to, for long-term borrowing. I know it's a small an amount, but some of the projects that carry forward would have been in here, so they'll, they'll be here next year, so deferring it's okay.
I think the same thing every time, like, why don't we just go to a bank?
Right.
They did the option away from us. Other questions? I, I, just as soon as I see this motion, I just know, I saw Counsel Thorburn cleaning his glasses, ready to go. Would you like to make that motion, please?
Sure, 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 your worship. Whereas Clause 66, Section 1 of the Municipal Government Act, the Act provides that a municipality may borrow to carry out an authority to expend funds for capital purposes conferred by act or another act of the legislation. And whereas Clause 91-1A of the Act provides that where a municipality is authorized to borrow money, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, the minister, that the sum shall be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures in one sum or by installments as determined by council. And whereas Clause 91-B of the Municipal Government Act authorized the council to determine the amount in term and the rate of interest on each debenture, when the interest on a debenture is to be paid and whether principal and interest on a debenture are to be paid. And whereas Clause 91-2 of the Municipal Government Act states that in accordance with the municipal finance corporation, the mayor or warden and clerk or person designated by council by policy shall, shall sell and deliver the debentures on behalf of the municipality at the price in the sums and in the manner deemed proper. And whereas the resolution of council to borrow was approved by the municipal council on June 14th, 2021, be it therefore resolved that under the authority of Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act, the town of Bridgewater borrow by the issue and sale of debentures of sum or sums not exceeding $236,810 for a period not to exceed 15 years, subject to approval of the minister, that the sum be borrowed by the sale and issue of debentures by the town of Bridgewater in the amount that the mayor or warden and clerk or other person designated by council deems proper, provided the average interest rate of the debenture does not exceed the rate of 5.5%. That the debenture be arranged with the Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corporation, where the interest be paid semi-annually and the principal payments made annually. That the resolution remain in force for a period not to exceed 12 months from the passing of this resolution.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Colwell. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, donations to the SoShore Fieldhouse Society. So, just a reminder that people make donations to the fieldhouse through our organization, and then those, when they are collected and requested, they flow back out. So, this is just a reminder again that we're not constantly making donations to the fieldhouse. This is community donations that come in. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Frazier?
Yes, your worship. I make motion that council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $13,500 to the SoShore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Designated Community Fund and Project Application for the Bridgewater Curling Club.
Me again. So, we received an application from the Bridgewater Curling Club. The application is attached, and they explain that they are in a situation where they need to complete some significant repair work prior to being able to start their season. And so, they have, also have indicated that they are not a charitable organization, therefore they're not able to receive charitable donations and issue a receipt. So, they've come to the town of Bridgewater to request to have a designated community project fund set up for the Bridgewater Curling Club. They've requested, or they hope to raise their total project cost of $75,000, and they're hoping to attract donations through the town of approximately $10,000. They're hoping to have that completed by December 15th of 2021, because they have a tight timeframe to get their repair work done. However, we have suggested that council consider leaving that deadline open till the following December, just in the event that they're slower raising their funds or something else were to come up. We'd hate to cut them off in December, and they had some money roll in in January to assist them. So, we, we are requesting to extend that. The creation of the project results in, at the front counter here at Town Hall, we would accept donations, provide donation receipts to anyone, and just like your previous report for the fieldhouse, anytime we receive donations and receive a request from the Curling Club to withdraw those funds, then we would bring a report to council, let you know how much has been received in donations under the designated community fund. We would then request council to make that grant to that organization for the amounts received at that time. Usually, we try to do it, you know, if there's a substantial amount and they're ready for their project, or in other cases, they may accumulate for a period of, quite a period of time. We felt that the creation of this project was in line with council's priorities, which are to provide recreation opportunities for people of all ages and abilities, and it provides for recreation to be diverse, inclusive, and affordable, and we felt that the application was within the guidelines of the designated community project fund.
Questions on that? Counsel Thorburn?
Not really a question, it's more of a comment. I was talking to Mike Noss this morning, he's a maintenance guy at the Curling Club, and there'd been noise putting that plant into the compressors installed, so it's the top priority, and it has to be done before they can curl this year, so, yeah, they need our help.
Pretty much. Other questions or comments? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Colwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund, accept the designated community project fund application submitted by the Bridgewater Curling Club, as contained in Document 21-129.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, 9.7, is September 30th, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, and request to fly the Mi'kmaq flag at Pinewiska Park. Just for reference, we currently have a community flag pole that is down at Shipyard's Landing. That is traditionally where we would fly different flags for different organizations, but I don't think I need to state the obvious importance of this flag at that park for the fact that that park is named for the traditional name of the river. The day, September 30th, is one that's very important, and so it's just logical to have the flag, the flag flying there, but it does require a motion of council to do that the way our bylaws are set up. Am I taking away?
No, no.
I'm never gonna explain it. Because our bylaws are set up in a way that council has to approve flying the flag at the community flag pole, and any kind of deviation from that definitely requires council's input.
And there are also some, some options that are provided for council in terms of the length of time. So, you could just say that the flag would be flown at that park for September 30th in recognition of the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. We could have a week-long period, or you could have that flag flown, I believe the recommendation is out of, out of limits, so indefinitely at the park, just in recognition of, of the park. So, whichever you choose, we would incorporate that into the policy.
Counsel McDonald?
If it were flown indefinitely, could it be switched out? Should there be a request for another flag to be put up, so that one would go up temporarily, and then we would switch it over?
Yeah, so, I think that right now, your community flag is down at, is it down at Shipyard's Landing?
Yeah.
And that's where you would fly flags for, for different purposes. This is suggesting that it's kind of in recognition of the park itself, that it would be fitting to have that flag flown there as opposed to having others, but certainly up to council if you want to have that as a community flag pole too. We're just suggesting it be limited. Okay.
Question, other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion on the floor? Counsel Thorburn?
Your worship. I would move that council of town of Bridgewater approve the request to fly the Mi'kmaq flag at Pinewiska Park as part of observance for the inaugural National Day of Truth and Reconciliation on September the 30th, 2021, and fly the flag indefinitely at Pinewiska Park in recognition of the historic Mi'kmaq presence in La Haye River Valley, the traditional Mi'kmaq name the park bears, and in support of their public education and remembrance of the tragic legacy of the Indian residential school system.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Frazier. Further discussion?
Question?
Actually, being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to business, arise the unfinished business. We're giving, gonna give notice for the street, park, and trail naming and renaming policy, or policies. I don't know if you have any more? Do you want to give a little bit more background on that?
Yeah, so, council had directed that the Heritage Advisory Committee look at the process for the naming of streets, parks, and trails, and this, this came out of a request to have Cornwallis Street reconsidered in terms of a name, which brought to light the need to perhaps look at the criteria for how we come up with road names. So, the Heritage Advisory Committee has done that. They've consulted with the Anti-Racism Task Force, and council will, at their next council meeting, consider proposed amendments to the policy that will essentially set out the criteria around how a name gets chosen and, and what's acceptable for, for having a road name. And we're looking at separating out the process for road name, road names from parks and trails, in particular, when, when, when you would want to look at commemorative names of individuals versus not looking at that as well. So, the amendments will be in draft form for council's consideration at the October 13, 13 council meeting.
Any questions on that? Again, this is just giving notice, but if there's any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Colwell, you're on a roll tonight.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the October 12th, 2021 council meeting, policies with respect to street, park, and trail naming and renaming will be considered.
Thank you. It's a 13th, isn't it? Yeah. The Thanksgiving throws us off, so.
13.
13.
Is it 12, 12?
It is 12.
12, okay.
Perfect. Your motion was perfect. Seconded by Counsel Thorburn was first. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Yeah, you tell me we get into the end. 10.2 is a request for waiver of co-location fees for amateur radio club on our antenna.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, back in March of 2021, council gave direction to staff to negotiate co-location agreements with the users of the town's radio tower. That's going to be located on Public Service Commission property. Council remembers we had that within our capital budget to, to have a new tower erected, and there are antennae from, from various users that are, that are on that tower. So, we were looking at coming up with co-location agreements, and the estimated average cost per user would be around $1,600. In June of 2021, the town received a request from the amateur radio club to waive the user fees for the club to locate their antenna on the radio tower, and the request is attached to the staff's report on the agenda. And at the June council meeting, council directed that staff review and advise as to the implications in considering the club's request to waive the fees for the new tower. So, staff have reviewed the matter. We've consulted with the regional emergency management organizations coordinator Angela as well. As noted in the amateur radio club's request, they, they note that they are available for emergency communications. So, really, the value of that tower to the town, based on discussing this with Graham, Hopkins, as well as the radio club and Remo, is that there are low points in the town where having antenna on the tower that's just out past the Best Western doesn't give you 100% coverage of the town because of the low points. The tower on the PSC land will. So, it'll, it'll provide the coverage for the town of Bridgewater in a small area outside of the town as well. So, the benefit is, is to the town. Do we draw upon these resources? In the event of a communication failure, we would. So, that, based, I think Angela mentioned, it's been some time since we've been in a situation where we've had to call on them, but it is, you know, that's probably a good thing that we haven't, and they're there. In the event that we do have that type of communication failure, we'll have that, the radio club will be able to provide that assistance via Remo to town, the town area and a little bit surrounding the town as well. So, that's the value, and that they provide that emergency service. Now, having said that, there are the other users that have their equipment on the tower too are providing emergency services as well. So, that's, I guess, for council, just to be, to be aware of that. The, as I say, the financial implications are $1,600 a year. I did discuss it with our Remo coordinator to say, is this really a Remo expenditure? And as indicated, the beneficiaries are really, the benefactors are really the, it's the town in terms of coverage, that we don't have that. We have some holes right now, and this will provide coverage for those holes. So, the options that council has are to grant the request in full apart, so you may say, you know what, we'll give you a little bit, but not the full thing. You cannot grant the request to waive the co-location fees and charge them to, to locate, as the other users will be paying the fee to of approximately $1,600. Or if you feel there's more information you need to make your decision, you can, of course, defer as well. And the recommendation is, is that the fees be waived, given the coverage that it provides to the town and ensuring coverage during communication failures.
Do you know how many times we've had to utilize their service due to communication failure?
My understanding is it's been a long time. I think there might have been, the last time we had a communication failure, the towers weren't working either for the, the radios, the TMRs, but if, I don't, I can't remember what happened there, and that was probably about five years ago, perhaps. But if the towers were working, we would have used them, and...
And we have better equipment now than we would have then as well, right? Like, our, our new radios that we use as an organization would be much more robust.
Yeah, we still rely on those antennae though, right? Like, so.
But in terms of their, in terms of the, the piece that the, that the amateur radio club provides, right?
We would still, yeah, we, but I believe... We would still, yeah, but I believe we'd still rely on them.
If our systems fail.
Yeah.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is our system is certainly more robust than it would have been even five years ago, no?
I can't, I would assume so, but.
TMR has come into existence, what, a few years ago? And every department of the police is fully on TMR. The other emergency service and fire department are basically TMR. They use the other ones for different fingers, for different work that they do. But so TMR has come a long way and is used by all emergency services, so, yeah.
Just, I'm just looking at, we have a number of emergency service providers that are on that antenna, right, on our pole. And I'm struggling with the notion of waiving the fee entirely for one, that might, in the off-chance, provide us some service, but not for others that provide essentially daily emergency coverage for their communities. You know what I mean?
Yeah. So there's two fire departments, and I believe the Bridgewater Fire Department as well. And, yeah, mutual aid agreements would provide that cross-coverage, but, yeah, they would be charged a fee.
I personally would rather enter into an agreement with the amateur radio club that says, when we use your services, we will pay you whatever, $100 a day, $200, whatever, do you know what I mean? Versus, I just, I don't know, what's one of the thoughts around the table on that one?
Well, doesn't, isn't, maybe Pleasantville still used to be on that?
I don't know.
I believe, as well as O'Keele.
O'Keele is, yeah.
Bridgewater, I believe.
I know there's two fire departments and then Bridgewater, I believe. And then we have, of course, Public Works. Larry, that's on it.
DSC would be on that as well.
Yeah, DSC.
I'm certainly not trying to discount the value that the service provides. Just, if I just look at it and say 99% of the time it's used for their own purposes, then I don't understand how you justify giving it for free if it's, like I said, 99% of the time it's for the amateur radio club for their use. I don't know. Counselor McDonald.
Are you saying that Bridgewater, because of its elevation, is a gap or just there are spots in Bridgewater?
Spots, just spots.
So how much of an impact are those spots? Like, are they really small spots and it's not a huge impact? Or could that be disastrous if?
I couldn't, I can't answer that. I think we'd have to probably have someone from here do that. But I do know that when we were looking at where to locate the tower, that was chosen there because of the fact that it provided that coverage or we had a few holes.
But if our stuff is on that tower and their stuff is on that tower, then, because the tower fails, then nobody's getting anything off of that tower, right? Really, what you're talking about is if our equipment on that tower fails and theirs happens to not fail, then we would utilize their service.
Well, they would, they'd be providing it to Remo, whereas we, our Public Works, probably wouldn't be doing that, right?
So now, then, but didn't you say that it's a town thing, not a Remo thing?
We're part of Remo, but we, and we, you could make the request to Remo to fund it. I do know that the District of Lunenburg is putting up a tower for Remo at their admin building, and there was one on Aberdeen Road as well. But the benefactor is really the holes or the gaps in the town of Bridgewater in terms of coverage. So, but certainly counsel may want to ask Remo if they would consider funding that $1,600, and then it'd be shared across the partnership. It's an argument that has to be made for the benefit for Remo to do that.
That's what I would suggest as an audit first, is to have this go to Remo. Because we partner on a lot of stuff that we get the small end of the stick on, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, would we suggest to defer the motion to make that request to Remo then? If that's the wish of a.
You can pass a motion to refer to Remo and request that they fund.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, for the request to Remo and be held, I guess, go to the Remo Board.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. It may seem funny to kind of be debating $1,600 when we just passed multimillion-dollar spending.
I think it's the principle behind it.
Yeah, and it's the, it does, I think it does set precedent. The tower's going to be up there for decades and decades, and this would be, if you're going to do it, if you're going to waive the $1,600, then in my opinion, you're waiving the $1,600 forever. So you just have to, I think we just need all the information. So we have a motion to refer this to the Remo Board for discussion there. And it's been moved and seconded. Any further debate or questions?
Question.
Any question being called? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to new business. We have the audit of financial statements. So just for the public's awareness, as the Director of Finance comes down, Audit Committee is all of counsel and a citizen representative. And so we met this afternoon before this council meeting with our Director of Finance and our auditors from Grant Thornton to go over this. So I'll turn it over to our director to run us through that meeting.
Okay. Perfect. So I'm going to go through the consolidated financial statements. And so keeping in mind that the audited, or it's still in draft, consolidated financial statements include all of the funds of the town, as well as any commissions of the town. That includes general town operating, capital, all the reserve funds, the Bridgewater Public Service Commission, the Municipal Joint Services Board, as well as 50% of the LCLC operations. And so those are all consolidated into these set of financial statements. It is not just the town operations or general operating fund. Page A4 is the consolidated statement of financial position or the town's balance sheet. The items to note there is that our cash and cash equivalents is at $11 million, and it was at $7 million last year. We have had some funding that we are holding on to prior to capital projects being finished, as well as surpluses the last couple of years that are sitting in reserves, as well as gas tax funds. So that's increased our cash balance substantially. Taxes receivable is significantly lower than last year as a result of collecting on some larger outstanding amounts that were outstanding last year and are collected in full at the end of March 31st. Those are really the highlights, which leaves the town with financial assets of $34.6 million. There's $13.5 million of liabilities. Included in that is deferred revenue for things such as gas tax or funding for capital projects that are incomplete. So that is not showing in our revenue, but is deferred until the projects are complete. And that's $2.2 million. And we have outstanding long-term debt of $5.3 million at March 31st, which leaves the town with total net financial assets of $21 million. We have non-financial assets, which are mainly our tangible capital assets. So the net book value of our, of all of our tangible capital assets, including those of our share of any other organizations, is $75.8 million. And we have a bit of work in progress. That's actually capital projects that are in process and carried forward to the next fiscal year at $1.6 million. So we have an accumulated surplus of $99 million for all of those funds on a consolidated On page A5, this is where all the consolidated revenue shows. So again, it's all of the entities that I previously mentioned, as well as any transactions between funds or those entities are eliminated on consolidation. So there's things that might show up in our non-consolidated statements that maybe a transaction with the LCLC, a grant to the LCLC, when we bring their revenue in, we don't want to double count things, so things get eliminated. The highlights under tax revenue, you can see that it's over budget significantly, and that's a result of de-transfer tax being $287,000 over budget, which was significant for us. And conditional transfers from other governments, looks like it's significantly under budget, but we are budgeting for funding some capital projects with grant money. The projects aren't complete, so as we talked about just a minute ago, it's sitting in deferred revenue until we can recognize the revenue. So we have total revenue of 22, just under $22.7 million. On the expenditure side, the total is 20, just under $20.7 million for an annual surplus of just under $2 million. Again, not our operating surplus, but on a consolidated basis, including all our funds. I also wanted to bring your attention to the prior year column, the 2020, which refers to Note 25. So there was a restatement of the prior year, a correction of a previous error, so that's been corrected. And you'll see in Note 25 the details regarding that. And the audit report will also note the correction of that error when it's attached to the draft, when it's attached to the final financial statements. There's one other thing to draw your attention to, and that is Note 19. And it's, I wanted to identify the expenses column in particular. There's a couple of lines where we have people with negative expenses, and I just wanted to highlight that so that everyone's clear in that. There were conference fees that were paid for in fiscal 2019-20, so before this fiscal year. As a result of COVID-19, things were canceled and refunds were received in the next fiscal year after we were done last fiscal year's year-end. Then they impacted this fiscal year. So I know it does stand out and look unusual, but I just wanted to address that so it's clear why that's happened. So that's everything on the consolidated statements. We actually have two other sets of statements. One is our non-consolidated, the other is our non-consolidated. So I just wanted to highlight page B2 and the non-consolidated statements. Our general operating fund had an operating surplus of just over $1.3 million, and you'll see that on page B2 near the bottom. So we show an annual surplus of $0. It's because we are required to transfer any surpluses we have to our general operating reserve. The non-consolidated statements show the detail of all those individual funds that are consolidated into the town financial statements, so you can look at that for detail. They are not audited. They are used for reporting to the province who requires both consolidated and non-consolidated information. The next set of statements that we have are the Town of Bridgewater Trust Fund financial statements. These are funds that don't belong to the town. They are funds that we're holding in trust. The main categories are for scholarships. There are funds that estates or individuals left with the town with a distinct instruction that scholarships be paid from those funds. And those, the scholarship fund has $19,388, $338, sorry. There's a school lands one with $9,841, as well as a cemetery trust with $476,000. And we administer those funds. The primary purpose of the scholarships is that the school board or the individual schools who receive it, receive applications and let us know when they have an applicant. We only pay the scholarships in years where there's enough income built up in them to pay out. The cemetery funds are, for the most part, either prepaid service packages or perpetual care funds. So we keep those perpetual care funds forever for maintenance of the cemetery. And that, that income does come back into the town, but just the income portion earned on that, on that trust fund. And our last set of financial statements are the Smart Cities Challenge project. So our funding partner requires us to report to them the revenue and expenditures each fiscal year for the Smart Cities Challenge project. So we have a statement of revenue and expenditures for that because it's a project, it doesn't have a balance sheet. You'll also note that the 2020 column has the restated because it's this project which we found the error and restated the previous year financial statements. And you'll see the details of that in Note 2. So the Smart Cities project had $790,000 of revenue in the current year, and they had $795,000 of expenditures for a small deficit of $5,830. However, they had a surplus of $676,000 in the prior year, so they're just using up some of that surplus. And that is everything, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions from counsel? Kind of ran through these during the audit committee, so I suspect most of this is answered. Seeing any hands? Is someone prepared to make a motion to endorse the recommendation of the Audit Committee? Counselor McDonald?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Audit Committee and approve the, sorry, the audited consolidated financial statements for the town of Bridgewater, the unaudited, non-consolidated Town of Bridgewater financial statements, the audited Town of Bridgewater Trust Fund, and the non-consolidated audited financial statements for the Smart Cities Challenge project for the year ended March 31st, 2021, as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin. It's hard to say consolidated than audited, to break.
It was, yeah.
Any questions before we go to the votes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item, 11.2, is the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Fall Conference. So that is coming up, and we need, because it is a voting conference, we need to appoint delegates, so that's be a motion to counsel. I know Deputy Mayor Tanner is interested in going. He is the vice chair of the Towns Caucus, so quite important that he does actually attend. I'm interested in going as well. It's virtual, I should say going, like going to our computer.
The committee room.
The committee room, yes. I don't know if anyone else is interested in virtually attending. Hearing none. Is someone prepared to move the appointment of myself and Deputy Mayor Tanner as delegates to the NSFM? Counselor Thorburn?
I would, I move that town council, Town of Bridgewater appoint Mayor Mitchell and Deputy Mayor Tanner as delegates for the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Fall Conference and approve all reasonable associated expenses.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin. Discussion, hearing none. One day we'll go to an in-person conference, it'd be amazing. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Before we get to the last, I don't know, I should just let counsel know that last week, as you know, I'm the chair of the Standing Committee on Municipal Infrastructure and Transportation Policy for the FCM. And so I chaired our, last week, all the meetings, all the committee meetings were held, all week for the FCM. So I chaired that meeting, and we had a great discussion on the infrastructure deficit that municipalities are facing from coast to coast. And we are definitely not alone when I think of the challenges we have in listening, for example, to the challenges that Corner Brook Newfoundland is facing with a $90 million wastewater treatment facility problem because they don't have one. They don't have a wastewater treatment facility. And so they have a $90 million project that they need to do. Their entire allotment of federal funding, according to their provincial federal agreement, for the whole province, $90 million. So they face the same challenge as we do when they look at, you know, population base versus need. So it was, one hand, it was kind of nice to not feel alone there, and the other hand, just realize from coast to coast to coast, it's just a massive, multi-multi-billion-dollar infrastructure problem for, you know, a country that, in the grand scheme of things, is not that old, but our infrastructure is just ancient. So it was a good meeting. Forward to gas tax negotiations, hopefully being fruitful, but anyway, that was last week, that was, it was good. Our last item is the one we added, which is the accessibility grant. I'm going to turn it over to the CIO to run us through what this one is.
Sure.
Because there is a deadline to make a decision.
Tonight.
Tonight on this.
So about a year and a half ago, Allison, or a year ago, I guess she's only been here for a year, she applied for an accessibility fund grant of $100,000 to do an accessibility project. And we had applied at the time for the Bridgewater Memorial Arena for an elevator. And an alternative would be a switchback, which would provide access to the Centennial Trail where the, where the overpass is on King Street. And that would be kind of like what you would see beside Jax, you know, that type of switchback, you know, with ramps. And we, everything was put on hold, so we didn't hear anything. And we also had a ramp, a small ramp at the Bridgewater Memorial Arena, the former arena. So we just, we undertook the ramp, but didn't do anything else. And we've just heard that we are. So we just, we undertook the, the ramp, but didn't do anything else. And we've just heard that we are eligible for the $100,000. And before we sent the confirmation that we were going to be doing an elevator at the arena, we wanted to confirm and check in with council that in fact we're still kind of committed to wanting to, to use these funds for that. So the elevator, I think at the time, had a cost of around $75,000 to $80,000. So there'd be a small amount left over and we are doing a pump station improvement at Shipyard's Landing. And there, there is going to be washrooms and we were going to make them accessible to the public, not just staff. Because right now we rent porta potties for about $13,000 a year there. And so we wanted to do that check-in and, and make sure that council still wishes to kind of proceed with the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. We had, I believe it was $950,000 over many years, multiple years for, for an investment. We told council that. We did $150,000 last year or the year before to put transit in. This year we did the roof repairs of $50,000. Next year we showed in the capital budget that there's $100,000 for moving the farmer's market in, or we were going to look at the second floor for the South Shore Players. So there's been a lot of things that have come up since then. We know that our neighboring municipality is looking at a feasibility study to, to create kind of a community hub that would perhaps be vying for the same tenants. So the question becomes is, do we want to proceed and put that elevator in there? Or do we want to redirect this $100,000 to another, another accessible project, but we have to let them know the project? We do know that at the Shipyard's Landing, as I say, we've already awarded the tender for the pump station improvements. It's going to have washroom facilities and we were proposing to open that to the public by making it accessible. And we can expense $100,000 quite easily of what's already being done there towards this, this fund. I think there's also been the suggestion that maybe it's a, a washroom in a different location. But either way, I think the first question is, is are we still, do we wish to use this funding for an elevator at the, at the former arena, as was originally intended when we made the application a year ago? Or given the way things have changed over the last year, do we want to redirect that to an accessible washroom? And, and then we can consider whether we're happy to redirect it to the Shipyard Landing project, or if we want to look at another spot within town. And I, we have to know tonight. Because they, yeah, it's a last minute thing. Yeah, yeah.
Like not even tomorrow. Like, Tammy has to leave this meeting and let them know tonight.
Well, are we still committed to the Players Group with our regional plan? Then if we are, we should be committed to the elevator to make sure that that plan that we started stays on schedule.
So there's, there, we don't have any like written commitments from any, any of the potential partners. It was, a feasibility study was done and they were stakeholders that were consulted and certainly expressed interest in leasing some space from us. And when Parkview was announced and that there was going to be a performing arts center there, we reaffirm the commitment of the South Shore Players to use the, to use the arena. We haven't reaffirmed that because this is just a feasibility study being done with our neighboring municipal unit. But it still begs, the question is to, if we wish to continue down that road, make improvements incrementally and secure those tenants. In order to use the second floor, you need an elevator. It has to be accessible.
Well, we've invested a fair amount. We certainly have a home for transit. We have a home for parks and wrecks. And I personally would support only if that money goes to that elevator so we can keep on our plan. I want support and motion to put it somewhere else. We committed that money when we went for it. We had a project in mind and I think we should follow our path because we've invested quite a bit of money now.
I think with the, with the performing arts venue, I, I think our commitment was to go down the road with other partners. I'm not sure we, I certainly remember having discussions around the table that we weren't going to fund the whole thing. I know, I was hoping that our neighboring municipality would be, you know, if you were going to have a performing arts venue at the old arena, I was hopeful that it would be regional in nature. On a recent call, Deputy Mayor of the Municipal District of Lunenburg made it very clear, there will be no investment from the municipality, the District of Lunenburg, in the old arena. So that, those were his exact words. So I mean, I'm assuming that that means if he said that, that they've had that discussion, which means that we have one less partner at that table. I don't know if that changes it for you. It changes it a little bit for me if all of a sudden, one of the people I thought would be at the table joining us is now absent. And then that, that discussion we had was when, it was after the Parkview announcement for performing arts had been made there. But since then, the municipality of District of Lunenburg is looking at this community hub that will have potentially space for performing arts venue. So now we're going from zero performing arts venue in the region to potentially three. And it just, to me, it throws a, throws a huge wrench into this. And I'm not saying, like if we're going to move ahead, it needs to be an elevator. You just can't have it not accessible.
Regardless whether it's the performing South Shore Players or it's another tenant, you'll need the elevator if you want to use that space.
We're dealing now with MODL with pickleball courts. We've been fighting that back for a year and we're still no further ahead than was a year ago. And we're probably not going to get their support. And I think we all can come to that conclusion because of the lack of discussion to move that forward when every other town and every other small unit is putting in pickleball courts. And we're still at a standstill. And they're very much needed. And the demographics, the other day I sent around, the younger age are playing pickleball. Every age, and it's up tremendously. And the average age of pickleball now went from the high 70s, we're down into the 43 age range. So, you know, we're probably not going to get their support on that. Does that mean that Bridgewater's not going to put in pickleball courts? Are we going to leave that on the shelf for another year or two? I don't think we should.
No, for, for right now, we, we need to, we need to stick with the, with the arena and, and discussing the elevator. Patrick, I see your.
Yeah, just for council's information, John Allen, on behalf of the South Shore Players Board of Directors, has continued to keep in touch with me. We spoke after council passed its budget this year because he wanted to be able to update the Board of Directors on whether or not BMA was proceeding and at what pace it was proceeding. I have since corresponded with John again during the summertime and there's been no indication that they are interested in going anywhere else to date. So for whatever that's worth, they continue to express interest in the BMA renovation.
Okay. No, thank you for that update. Council McDonald?
Kind of trying to look at the flip side of this. If we put an elevator in there and we can start renting out space, that could bring in funds to allow us to do more work to the, to the BMA. Because we know we have to do something with it at some point. You know, even the exterior really needs some, some work. So if we have space that can be, can be leased to organizations, give them a home, we put a few dollars in, in reserve and can pump it back into that building. That's helpful to us at a time when we know the majority of our budget is pretty tied up in wastewater. It's not going to be significant money, but.
I would say putting in the elevator would signify that there's a commitment to proceed with some, some more capital upgrades to the building. One of the, when Patrick presented to council during budget deliberations, just January, February, we, we presented to you some numbers that indicated that the tenants that we'd be able to secure and the lease rates we would have would basically fund your operating costs. So your operating and maintenance. What you wouldn't recover is any, the capital investment piece. So it's not like a business plan that says you're going to get back all the capital that you invest in it. It's about covering, keeping the lights on and the heat on and covering the basic maintenance pieces of it. But it would, and that's the main reason bringing it here is just to reconfirm that commitment that if, if we go ahead with the elevator, you're not just putting an elevator in for the sake of putting one in. That means that we're going to be committing to doing, improving the look of that building and, and making it for the community to lease and, and rent. So some money would have to be in future years put on the table to, to, to get it to that point.
So that brings us right back around to the fact that money then has to be invested and we know there's one, potentially two, partners in the province that we don't have on board because they're looking at the other projects that are very similar.
So I think next year we had $100,000 in the budget for the farmer's market. And that was to, to look at doing some improvements on the inside of the building to, and even open up some space there. And at that time, we indicated that it could be used for the second story as well, right? So I don't, so it's that type of, and there were those check-ins every couple of years with council to say, okay, now we've got this space done and it's utilized. We want to move to the next step, right? So it wasn't like a big bang all at once that we were putting a million dollars on the table.
Yeah, the intention was that if council went about $100,000 per year at a time, that staff would take that money and try to basically turn that $1 into $2. So that $100,000 improvement would in fact be a $200,000 improvement each year going forward. And then it just became a question of what the order of operations was and what makes most sense from a construction standpoint. Whether we start with the auditorium space upstairs or whether we focus on firms where it's based downstairs.
Yes. And the elevator would give us the ability to, to do either really. And it was, it was money that we were proposing in the capital budget, so it removes that expense. It's 100% funded. So we don't have to put any money out to do the elevator.
And that gives us full accessibility to the upstairs for, and that's what the fund was intended for, accessibility.
Accessibility, yeah.
So funds, so funds up there to do.
Whatever funds is left over, what we would do is, is redirect that to the Shipyard's project. So that's going ahead. And we've got a dollar figure attached to the accessibility components to make it a, a publicly available accessible washroom. And that way we don't have to have the porta potties there.
Is everyone on board with that part? Because that's kind of new.
Yeah.
So, yeah, because I mean, we know we need public washroom in a small school facility. We still need one downtown. So, but I think, you know, I didn't realize it was $13,000. I always keep forgetting, may I should say, $13,000 per year just for the porta potties at Shipyard's Landing. It's not all the porta potties. It's just of that site. So I mean, it's, it's good money.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm on board with both, both concepts. I'd like to reaffirm our commitment to the arena and this is an opportunity I think we should take. And I love the, the add-on of the opportunity at Shipyard's Landing too.
I'd, I'd like to suggest that we probably have a more formal conversation with the South Shore Players and Farmer's Market. If we're, if we're moving forward to making a $100,000 commitment, funded or not, a $100,000 commitment on an elevator. I think that, that should give them enough confidence to then make a reciprocal commitment for becoming a tenant at, at the, at the arena. Because I'd be really frustrated if we put in a $100,000 investment after the $100,000 investment we put in to get everyone ready. And in the 2022, 23 season, they move. That would, that would be really frustrating. Because we, we've already been told, we've got a, we've got a neighbor who's deciding to basically build the same thing that we already have out there. Now, it's feasibility study, they may not do it. But they, they've said, this is what they want to do and it's fine. They're free to, they're free to do that. They've said that and that they won't fund this one. So again, if we're, if we're going to make that commitment based on these tenants who have said, we want to be part of this, I think it's only fair to say, we're far enough along that you now need to commit to that. I don't know if, if council thinks that's unreasonable. I'm not saying sign a five-year agreement, but, Council Conklin?
I don't know if that's something we need to somehow open up to the public to let them know that we're open to listening to potential tenants, offering potential tenants.
Yeah. You would do probably an expression of interest or some type of public call that indicated that, you know, we're looking for tenants. There's a space offering we have and.
But those are our two anchors, I would say. And so, and, and again, from the beginning, I think they've been the ones that have. Well, they, they came with the original pitch, right? Of, we would like you to use, we'd like to use the arena for Farmer's Market Performing Arts. So I don't know if we'd have gone this far down the road in this discussion without those, those two entities kind of walking alongside us. So I just want to make sure that this journey isn't going to end if someone else says, hey, we've, we've built this over here.
But I, I think we've all realized and know that if we hadn't have done what we did, we'd have invested over $2 million to put a new facility up that's required for transit and for parks and wrecks.
Oh, this is the better option.
And this is certainly, at that time and even today, the best option for the Town of Bridgewater and the residents that, that's paying the tax bill. There's no question. And hearing what Patrick said, I'm fully committed and believe that the Players Theater wants to perform at the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. And, and I, and I think to your point, we, we can contact that and maybe get a firmer commitment. I don't want to spend money up there if, if, if they say no, we're not going to do it. We have to have a commitment from them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think something that just says that they're committed to. I don't, again, not asking to sign a five-year lease at X number of dollars, but just the, the South Shore Players and the Farmer's Market said, you know, if this project is moving ahead, we are committed to being a tenant, subject to agreeing to a price.
And in the meantime, this will confirm with the funders that the elevator will proceed.
Right.
And we have until 2023 to have it installed. So Graham can breathe a little.
We got the best of both worlds.
An elevator and public washroom at Shipyard's Landing.
Yep.
Council McDonald?
Had a reasonable time to get an elevator considering delays and work timelines with other.
Well, I think it's two years, so I think we're good. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if elevators are in short supply, but they might be.
It's going to be Larry and a police.
They're engineers, they'll come up with.
Yeah, maybe police.
This is our new gym.
So you, you, do you need a motion? You just need, you have her.
This is the way we were proceeding. I just wanted to do that check-in to make sure that nothing's changed.
Just a quick comment. I know this was all around accessibility at that, a particular building for the elevator. There, I know there's washrooms there. Is there accessible washrooms there now?
I don't know.
It's been a long time since we've had a washroom in the area.
Just wondering what.
Think and look, but as we did our renovations, we made sure they were, yeah.
Accessible, yeah, okay.
I don't think we can have a public building without an accessible washroom now anyway.
Not as you're renovating it, no.
It'd have to be. We'll make sure that they are.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to an end of the regular scheduled meeting. We have an in-camera meeting following this for Section 22 to 2E, contract negotiations under the MGA. I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Frasier. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.